I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Baldwin, if you could.
Ms. Carney?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Reed Daly.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's council meeting?
Motion to approve agenda for tonight's council meeting?
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Yes.
And is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from August twenty-second?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Smiths?
Yep, yes.
And is there a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes from September seventh?
So moved.
Second.
Ms., um, Madam Chair, my copy of, unless it's been corrected, has, in the very first sentence, a little bit of an anomaly, a motion made by Ms. Ferguson, and second by Ms. Ferguson. I'm sure that's a typo or kind of an oversight kind of a thing, but that probably should be fixed. And I'm sure they can handle that.
Is there any other additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve the?
Prove as, uh?
As amended?
As updated, yeah.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Aye.
Mr. Smiths?
Yes.
And a motion to approve the September twelfth council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yep.
Mr. Smiths?
Yes.
We do not have any visitors on the docket this evening. I'll be brief real quick on my mayor's report. I met with Red Cross to do a walkthrough of the youth building at the park. They said that was a great location to host a flood drive. Just waiting to find a date for us, looking at November. They asked about December because that's a crucial time, but it's tough with staff and residents getting ready for the holidays, so we're looking at a November date. Wanted to give an update that's something I've been working on for the last three years, which is shocking that it takes this long, but the electric poles and lines out on Notman Road, finally was able to get the new pole set in by Frontier and then First Energy raised their lines and Spectrum came through and raised the cable, so can put that project as a complete and is appreciated by all the farmers around that has had an issue of getting their equipment through the last three years, so that was exciting news.
Now we just need to do Main Street.
Yeah, yeah, so like, well, lifting, lifting the lines is one thing, yeah. Removing, that brings another point that Mr. Stanford, Ms. Sonnet, Mr. Hutt and myself met with First Energy last week to talk about a plan and a phase plan of what it looks like to remove the lines on Main Street, so Mr. Stanford's working on that. We identified kind of a first phase, second phase of that project, so looking at kind of getting an update on that. And then met with the, our representative from the governor's office last week as well, and so that proved to be a good connection to hopefully put some of our projects that are needing to get completed at the forefront of their list. And then attended the planning and zoning, which I'll give the update later. Last, the week before that, I attended the Union County Safety Coalition meeting to listen and it's part of Safety Town Sergeant Prater attends those meetings for, as our representative, but it's been neat to sit in and listen about ways that we can work with our events and further help their, um, their agenda. And Walk to School Day is next Wednesday, October fifth, so I know Chief, are you going to be covering any details on that, on Walk to School Day, or are we going to put a?
Yeah, I think Tom, or Lieutenant Jaskus is actually taking care of that.
He's taking care of that, okay. So I know that wherever they have people to go out and stand to walk children to school, if you want to come out and join in?
Actually, well, I think we had, or last time we did it.
Last year.
We had a couple officers walk.
What's the date on?
Um, Wednesday, October fifth. And that is all I have. Ms. Sonnet, Finance Director?
To, uh, to piggyback on what you said about the electric, the electric in downtown is going to be turned off, the overhead poles, we're not going to have any lights, just going to give that, that vibe of what it's going to look like without the overhead lighting down there. It's not going to, we're not going to take them down just yet, we're just going to get that look right now, so hopefully Ryan has sent the information to First Energy to get them shut off. I think they call them shudders, that's what's going to happen. Later in the agenda, it's mentioned that there is going to be a motion for a public hearing. It says six-thirty, it's going to be six P.M. to meet, the public meeting with the county commissioners in October. The notes, we went to the market last, last Thursday, when it was, no, we could go Thursday. Mr. Conley kind of alluded to that, we thought we'd be at three and a half mark. We were, we were three point four seven is where we ended up being, so it was pretty spot on, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Carney.
Yeah, and this is probably the time to jump in on just, if anyone has any questions about that meeting, that meeting on the third at six is between Village of Plain City and the Madison County Commissioners to potentially form a sixty-one nineteen, so it's not between, there is no sixty-one nineteen yet, so right, this meeting is a joint meeting to discuss the possibility of creating a sixty-one nineteen, so any questions anyone may have, remember that it's two bodies discussing the creation of a third body, not us and the third body having the conversation, so I think finalizing questions ahead of that meeting, we want to remember that, you know, we're an internal single body that's meeting with another single body, so we need to kind of be on the same page, so I welcome anyone that has questions about it to reach out to either Ms. Sonnet, Mr. Lafayette, myself. I don't know that much about it, so I'm probably not the person to talk to, but just so that when we kind of think about that meeting as in that frame.
Are there any documents that are available regarding what's the context of, to be discussed, or?
There's going to be an agenda coming out and documents to go with it, yes. Uh, we are not, Mr. Albers, the attorney representing the potential district, is not creating all this.
Yeah, so.
So we're kind of like at their worst. He's scheduled for the public meeting.
Yeah, so, so, so let me, let me say that a different way and make sure I understand it, there, so there is no sixty-one nineteen yet. Mr. Albers is rep- representing the potential formation on behalf of both the Madison County Commissioners and the Village of Plain City, right? So any documents that he would provide, he would share with both the Madison County Commissioners and us, the same documents, it's not like he, he's just, he's just kind of working as the intermediary to work on the potential creation.
Yeah, the reason I, I ask is because, you know, getting together, discuss something, you know, it's helpful to know in advance what you're actually going to be discussing, and instead of what do you think about this idea kind of, kind of things, I would think there would be more substance to it than that, and so sooner rather than later would be a good time to get any kind of background material or anything that people need to know.
And I know, and I know the solicitor, you've worked with Mr. Albers in the past, so, um, what would you expect, just like some memos of like what we're going to, what would, you don't, we don't hold you to it.
Today, just earlier today, he sent over a proposed agenda and then also the preliminary study for reasons for formation.
Okay.
So he sent that over to Mr. Lafayette and Ms. Sonnet and I, so that we could kind of take a look at them.
Perfect.
And then, once those are good, we will send them out to council. We have not received the proposed petition yet, the petition is the document that actually gets filed with the court. We haven't seen that yet, I was getting until close of business today, and I have an email already drafted up that I'm going to fire off to him and Mr. McCarter, just going to ask him, because that's the important document, that's what gets filed in court, like I said, and it kind of lays everything out.
Perfect.
Um, about board appointments and what the district is actually going to do, so we kind of do, we really want to see that document.
And, and will either you or Mr. Lafayette, will someone from the village solicitor's office be there on the third?
Yes.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Is that eighteen hundred start time, hard?
Uh, well, it just got moved from six-thirty to six.
Yeah, I saw it at six.
It is, um.
Because I work until six.
It's a, it's technically a meeting of the county commissioners and village council, so in order to start it, we do need just a quorum of both those bodies.
So let me, uh, okay, perfect, so we'll need at least four of us, so looking around the room, you'll be late, will you be able to attend?
I should be here, yeah.
You should be able to attend, Mr. Reed, will you be able to attend?
Six o'clock, you said?
Okay, yeah, fine.
Yeah, I'll be able to attend, um, and then I guess my only other question, and if, if you don't have this answer right now, but maybe along with the documents, will there be a decision made, like a vote taken between, like the county will take a vote and we'll take a vote, or will that happen at one of our regular meetings subsequent to that, like, is there actually an action that will happen at that meeting?
There is, so that's the last document that we'll send out ahead of time, the county is doing their own resolution. Uh, Mr. Lafayette and I are drafting an ordinance. It's our understanding that both bodies, if everything goes well, is going to pass a resolution and an ordinance respectively in order to file the petition.
So, so, help me understand that a little bit, so we would have to pass by emergency and wave a second reading? So realistically, we need five members, um, and potentially even six, um, so we should, I'll reach out to Mr. Daly, I will talk to him, make sure that that, he can attend. I haven't talked to him, but I think so. Um, I'll reach out to him this week and make sure that he can attend, because based on our, our ordinances, we would have to pass like three things, you know, we'd have to wave a reading, pass by emergency and everything, if we're going to make an action that night, so.
That's going to, and that ordinance will probably, it will be the last thing that happens at that meeting.
Yes.
So we just need four in order to start it, and then the, the more numbers in order to pass the ordinance.
Perfect, I will, I will take the follow-up, Mr. Daly, make sure he's well aware of the meeting, okay? Thank you very much, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Chief McKee?
Uh, yes, just an FYI, the dreams, or she dreams again, five K run will be scheduled for October eighth, uh, this year at eight-thirty A.M. This is kind of going to take the, take over for the four miler that Uptown used to put on. Lieutenant Jaskus, Officer Seagress and myself met with the Jonathan Alder School Administration concerning their safety security training. They've, uh, once again asked the police department to assist them with this. I would like to thank, personally thank Officer Seagress for all the work he has done with this, uh, and also all the training he does for the district, for the school district. Just a reminder that the homecoming parade is this Wednesday, starting at six o'clock, uh, so there should be, there might be some traffic issues at that time. Other than that, that's all I have, just I'm there.
Thank you, Chief McKee. Village Administrator?
Got nothing, other than she was in the building today, nine-four, she brought the baby, so.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Mr. Terry, Council President?
Yeah, so we already talked about the special meeting, um, so our next work session will be on, I believe it's the, the next Wednesday, so the seventh, or no, sorry, that's, sorry, I know. I was in, I was in September, uh, the fifth, so on that docket, we have the uptown redesign plan, uh, the Brandy Initiative review, and there will be a DRB appeal. Um, I would ask that the Solicitor's Office, if possible, um, we have not done a true DRB appeal, and especially certainly not with some of the newer members of council, um, and I'll, I'll send a follow-up email to this, uh, but basically, if we could have kind of like the beats on how, uh, the appeal should go in the eyes of the Solicitor's Office, so, um, what is to be reviewed, what isn't, I know there was a debate, um, and I, I'm not going to even try to litigate or understand at all if we're rehearing, um, kind of like evidence or we're just hearing the process, so if we can kind of have that laid out on what, uh, how it goes and how something would be either upheld or overturned, so if there's a simple majority versus super majority, anything like that, um, just so we know, just because it's new to us, so we kind of can go into that meeting, you know, not be explained it as we're doing it, it'd be nice if we had a little update ahead of time. And like I said, the other two items I have on there are the uptown redesign, the Brandy Initiative, I'll send a follow-up to Ms. Brill, um, to make sure we're on track for those, but I assume we are, just to finalize, unless you know that we're not on time. All right, cool, all right, I'll send a follow-up, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Terry, and also on that October fifth, um, I'm, it's the first meeting of the Jonathan Alder Strategic Planning Commission, so I, I'd like to know that process too, because I would like to attend that if it's at all possible, because they use our, the knowledge of what the village is doing and with their school plans, so I'll be in contact with you.
Yeah, and, and now that I think about it, also, you'll probably recuse yourself.
I will have to.
Yeah, you'll have to accuse yourself being on that committee, so we'll need to make sure we have the right amount of people.
Well, I guess it depends on if we're, if we're reviewing it from a procedural standpoint, or if we're reviewing it from an evidentiary standpoint.
Another, another, another good reason is to get a kind of a, a one pager, here's what it is, here's what we recommend, Mr. Rucker either sits on it or doesn't sit on it, um, depending, he's obviously our DRB council representative, so, cool.
Thank you for that update, um, and then Law Director?
Um, the only thing that I have was going to be later on in the discussion items, um, the alley easement, so, um, we did complete the easement language that's needed in order to get this done, did review the plat, um, to see if maybe we could pull the description from, of the alley from that plat and just kind of insert it into the easement, and we can't, it is deficient, so we do have to go ahead and order a survey, um, so that is moving along a little bit slower than I know everyone wants to, but it is moving on.
Okay. It seemed like such an easy thing to do when it came up, but it's.
And then the clock tower easement, that's, I'll just put that on your radar too.
Yes.
Mr. Lafayette, okay, thank you. Marketing and Communications?
We had a meeting this past week, and I left all my notes at home, so we'll catch you on the next meeting with an update, but we do have, as Mr. Terry mentioned, there, we are, will be reviewing what the marketing study on the fifth, uh, or there, not marketing, the, the rebranding, and I know that Taylor was meeting with them today, so.
So, do you know if, uh, so I think we talked about this last time, if we would formally adopt it, and I think the answer was yes, we would, uh, do you know if at that meeting we'll formally adopt it, or is this like a final, like here's what it is and we'll vote on it, adopt it later, do you, do you have any idea?
I have, so as I understood it, as I understand, we will, at our next meeting, our, our next communication meeting, we will decide if we're ready for it to go to council.
Okay, when is your meeting, I'm sorry, you said?
It will be in October, after, after this next meeting, so we had our, so, so it'll be after the work session.
So are you, so you're thinking maybe we remove it from the work session, move it to November?
Let me confirm on that, so.
Let me, let me put you on the follow-up. And that, I don't know if ever had a chance, sorry, to jump back to mine, I sent out kind of an updated, hat-like discussion topics list and just kind of highlighted the newer items, and I'm sure we'll move stuff around, but I tried to add some stuff that we talked about, um, because we'll already have to start planning for next year, so.
Mr. Smiths, did you do some videos, I think, on the farmer's market?
I did, I did a video on the farmer's market, yes. So I went there a couple of times and took some video and, and compiled it into a little minute publicity thing. In, in the absence of a, of a formal marketing department, it's.
There you go, good.
You know, to do every now and then, so.
Thank you.
It's a volunteer effort.
Thank you for that update. Uh, BZA? Do you have an update, I, okay. And planning and zoning met last Wednesday with our, uh, public hearing for the zoning code rewrite. There's some good presentation from the community and asking like what they'd like to see as far as communications, uh, which Ms. Brill put together some thoughts on that of how we can better maybe advertise it, if you're not more digitally inclined, um, to see that something is out there, such as, um, some sandwich boards around or ways that, you know, putting it up on the Slack sign at forty-two with one sixty-one to say, you know, so, um, zoning hearing or other ways that people, that are a little bit more visual to advertise it, so hopefully by the time that it comes back to council and does a public hearing, you can take those in, put them into action items. Zoning Commission approved the zoning code, um, rewrites with some conditions that Ms. Brill is checking on and with the consultant, and one of them was clarify animal care with or without outdoor runs, uh, as it says in the uptown district, um, basically, it kind of was to Dr. Lynn at Plain City Animal Hospital, it made it sound like it, his business was a non-conforming business in that area, so Plating Commission wanted, um, to take a look at some of those businesses, that how can we make sure that we are not making it seem that we're trying to run, that, that we don't have the perception that we're trying to run current businesses out, that we want to make sure that they have a place and if they ever intend to sell their business in the future, that they have that option to, so it can go into something similar, such as a vet hospital, we definitely said we do not want that perception, because that's not our intent for the zoning code update. And some other questions came up about non-conformities, and there was a, a time period on, um, getting it reestablished for non-conforming properties, and it was at around six months, so basically, I'll use Plain City Animal Hospital as an, um, as a description, so say Dr. Lynn decides he wants to sell his vet practice, and the new veterinarian purchasing the practice takes eight months or a year to get it up and running, how they see fit, uh, it would, basically with the current code or the intended updates, it would make it seem like it was a non-conforming business, that they'd have to go back and get, um, get a permit for it, so that is kind of some of the things we ask them to take it to a year, because we just don't know about how reconstruction will go with a building and such, so that will be coming out as soon as the firm makes the updates and can bring it and put it on for a first reading, um, but I think we're in the right timeline on that for the zoning code, and the Plating Commission, I mean, we spent a lot of time making sure that the residential side of it was thoroughly vetted, so it's good to have extra eyes on like the uptown business district, and we appreciated everybody that came out to the meeting.
So can, I just get a clarification on the, the animal care business, he's, under the new zoning code, he would be a non-conforming business, is that correct?
How it, it read in the, like, previously, but we had it, um, changed where it is a permitted use.
Okay. So there basically is no problem once you get this thing, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, by the time it comes to council, so, um, that is all I have for planning and zoning.
I know we're talking about this later, the public hearing comments, are you tackling all of this right now, or do you need to actually?
Yeah, basically, that's the, that's, that's the, um, what I'm tackling.
Perfect, so I saw Ms. Brill had sent out a updated timeline, um, I don't know if anyone, if you want to talk to that at all?
Oh, yes, um. So, okay, uh, so they're hoping that on October tenth that we can set the public hearing date, um, which would be held about November fourteenth, um, and you can do the first reading and then a second reading on November twenty-eighth, um, so then that would be able to come in if there's a, you know, a thirty-day referendum period, um, so that we basically can have it approved by the end of December and so implement it in January is, is our timeline.
Perfect, so the, the, we'll schedule a public hearing October tenth, have it November fourteenth, that'll also be the first reading, second reading, third detail, done by January, cool.
And Plating Commission felt that it was important to, basically, they, they were some minor changes to, and to let the consultant keep looking at and working on to get it to council, so that way it can go through that second vetting process, but another public hearing, so that's where we'd like to see maybe like a Slack sign or, um, some sandwich boards that talks about zoning code, public hearing.
Perfect.
For that November fourteen.
Yeah, that's good.
Any other questions on that, or on the topic? Thank you, Mr. Terry, for having me go through that right now. Parks and Recreation Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last, um, council meeting, we've had two Music in the Parks, the, the oldest one was the Plain City Community Singers, which really turned out to be way more of a nice event than I thought it was going to be. Uh, the singers had worked hard to get their act together and they did a nice job, uh, at the park, it also was the largest crowd we've ever, ever had for Music in the Park in the ten years I've been doing it, uh, partly due to the fact that there's a lot of family members and aunts and uncles and grandchildren and whatever that come to these, but it was a really appreciative crowd, um, and I'm, I probably shouldn't say this, but we did christen them the pride of Plain City, uh, the Plain City Community Singers, so that was a really fun day for everyone. The second event was the Barbershop Quartet, which was yesterday, rain threatened the weather and depressed the attendance somewhat, uh, we finished in the dark, in the chill, and in the damp, so, um, the, uh, it wasn't ideal, the weather, the environment, let's say, uh, let's just say that, but a good time, you know, was had by, had by all. It was the last event of the season for Music in the Park, and, uh, so we will, uh, regroup for next year, and we've already started scheduling acts into, into, uh, next season. So beyond that, our next Parks and Rec meeting is, um, the second Tuesday of October, which is a good distance away, and we'll have probably a couple of council meetings even before that, so, um, we'll just, they're still working on the budget and the CIP, so, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Reed.
Mr. Reed, what's the number, what, how many people attended?
A hundred, not a hundred and fifty, um, you know, plus or minus five or so.
Okay.
We also have Fall Fest coming up on October twenty-second, and I forgot to mention in my report, the Historical Society is having their cemetery walk again this Sunday, October second, and it's from two to five P.M. at Darby Creek Cemetery, and I attended it a couple of years ago, I think twenty-eighteen, it was a really good event, so if you've never taken a tour of our cemetery and learned about the history, it's a good, good time to check that out. Are you, um, offering portraying acting again, or one of the?
Well, we, we're, I, I messed my schedule up, um, we are signed up to do it, I'm not sure if we're going to be doing it or not right now, so. We've already got our costumes rented, so I would guess we're probably going to be doing it.
So you can come see Mr. Rucker and, and Mrs. Rucker as one of the character.
And, and the saintly wo- and the saintly woman that tolerates me every day.
Yes.
For that Fall Festival, we're still planning on having tables or whatever, I have a table, I could definitely bring, who's named like a tablecloth, I'll bring some candy and everything.
I'm bringing tons of candy as well.
And a tent, if anybody can want to decorate that or not mess with it, or, you know, but.
What time was that?
Four to seven.
Four to seven.
I'll be in Detroit.
A tent, it would be a good idea, I think, it just was nice last year, kind of set up that as a booth, but I don't know, if we need two tents, or? How many, how many of us are going to be there? You going to be there?
Okay, I'll remind, but yes, lots of candy, because I expect a larger attendance than last year, and there was definitely over five hundred children that went through that trick-or-treat alley. Great, thank you very much, personal finance?
Uh, yes, we met on September twentieth, and Clement Nelson had gotten back, um, with staff on the updated information for the compensation study, um, so the committee spent our meeting time discussing, um, you know, the proposed, you know, proposed changes to that and updates to that, um, the only thing we really did, uh, come together as a group to do in the end was task staff with, um, you know, coming back to us with some, with, um, you know, coming back to us with some, um, supplemental information so that we can make a decision at our next meeting, um, which will be October the twelfth at six thirty.
Mayor, if I could interrupt you a little bit?
Yes.
Forgot to announce during my report that Ms. Barrell, Taylor Barrell, was, um, leaving us. She's moving on to the city of Pickwup. Her last day officially with the village is, is, uh, November sixth, but during that time, she's out on her honeymoon, she's getting married in, in Hong Kong. So she'll be out for a little bit, but she's leaving us.
And we thank her for her work and what she has contributed to the village. We appreciate all of it. Thank you, Ms. Barrell.
Totally forgot, I know, and now it's, I'm still on finance, I guess I, yeah.
Well, and then I forgot, and, and planning and zoning too, um, Fire Board?
That's me. Um, we have a meeting coming up next week on the sixth. The, so my, whatever I gave at the last meeting is relevant, uh, but there, the new truck did arrive, and they've been training the officer or the, uh, the, uh, folks in it. They've got another training this week, and then it'll be officially christened, I think, in another two weeks, and so there'll be some information coming out about that for the community to come by as they, as they spray the new truck with the old truck, as they back it in and push it into the garage, so. And then I believe they're doing some training over on the water tower this next week, so doing some rescue training.
Thank you, Mr. Sence. And Design Review Board?
We have a meeting, uh, Wednesday night here at six thirty. We have, I think, one certificate of appropriateness to review.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffor. Moving out reports. Is there a motion after we have discussed about the need for the special meeting, which is Monday, October third at six P M. With Madison County in council chambers, is there a motion to set the special meeting date?
So the second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Ruffor?
Yes.
Mr. Sence?
Yes.
There is no old business on the agenda, so moving into new business, first reading, Resolution eighteen dash twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the sale of impounded vehicles.
First, uh, pre-res, uh, first reading.
I messed up last time, so.
Discussion items, based on, we talked about zoning code update in the public hearing comments, um, we've already taken care of our two easements, so Uptown Streets A update, and Ms. Sonnet, if you'd like to.
Um, I, I shared, the engineer broke down the plan, I think, five, six alternates, um, we did a base bid and lucky five, I think, so it is, um, we gave prices, assisted with them, um, just in the, the time issues that we're having here, we decided to show it activated and see what kind of prices we get back. This was just like benchmarks, maybe, and so then after we get the bid prices back and we all decide, um, which alternate, if any alternates we want to move forward with, so, and I think it's going to bid, and I believe October third, I think it's one of the years, and they'll build it on October twenty-eighth.
Thank you, I, I, that's just pretty detailed, I mean, I don't know if I were in the right room, but they were line by line, so, uh, it'll be interesting to see what you've got.
Yeah, we extended out the completion time, only because we can get, uh, maybe get better contract and maybe cheaper prices as well. Instead of have that short timeline that we originally asked for.
Yeah, I mean, until we see the response, there's not a lot to discuss, but for me, I, I'd rather do it right than do it quick. If we do it, if we get a better bid, a better thing next spring, we don't do it right now, that's a bummer, but, um, at least we'll have it ready to go, slotted for spring, so.
Well, and honestly, with the, the businesses coming up that are right there on the north side of the holidays, like that would really.
And they're doing a lot of construction, there's like, there's, you know, swivel thing right, sitting right there right now, so giving them a little more time to get their stuff in order isn't probably the end of the world, so.
And since we've talked about all these other discussion items already, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, meeting adjourned. Thank you.